Ninety-nine Emeryville City Planning Commission. Could we rise and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Koo?
Here.
Commissioner Owen?
Here.
Commissioner Getz?
Here.
Commissioner Lutz?
Here.
And Sheriff Mooney?
Here. Commissioners Ballingero and Jermaine are excused. Before we get to citizens to be heard, Representatives for Lanier and Kinko's, we have a little problem. Without these two planning commissioners here, these two planning commissioners live across the street and I believe are planning on recusing themselves, so we won't have a quorum for your project. We have a meeting scheduled next Thursday, April 29th, or May 27th. So, we can't act on your items. I'm wondering if you would like to set the date for your hearings and go enjoy the beautiful weather.
As soon as possible.
Can they come next week?
April 29th? I can continue it to April, to a date certain.
On behalf of Kinko's, I would also ask that as soon as possible.
So, it'll be April 29th, next Thursday night.
And what we'll do is we'll publish an amended agenda. It's in plenty of time.
Right.
And since they were advertised for this meeting and you're formally continuing them to the 29th, we're fine.
Right. City Attorney, will I officially open those, say they're continued, and then close them? So, unless there's someone else here that wants to indicate that we're going to give testimonies tonight, we'll just be continuing them and you don't need to stay. And I don't see anybody else jumping up and down, so.
I tried very hard to find a reason not to be recused. We were trying to figure out whether it was 300 feet or 280 or 320, and I lost.
That was the 10-minute discussion here, so we apologize.
Sorry.
Enjoy the beautiful weather. Okay. Item two, citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens that wish to speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none come forward, we'll move to action recaps. The action recap is not ready, and we'll move on to public hearing.
Chair?
Yes.
Then we have, what about this one?
That's not ready either.
That's not ready.
Okay.
Definitely not ready. Director Capio, you want to do the 10-10-46 Street?
Planner Cromarty will do that staff report.
Great, sir.
Sheriff Commissioners and members of the public, this item is a conditional use permit and a design review application for 56 live-work units which are going to be on a property located on 46th and Adeline Street. As many of you may know, that property actually straddles the property lines between the cities of Emeryville and the cities of Oakland. And I will just try to refresh the commission's memory. And in December, we brought this item before you for an informational meeting, and that was a very good meeting for our staff because a number of issues were discussed, and you gave us specific directions with regard to how you would like to have the project treated and to give us guidance with regard to processing it. And as in a moment, I will get into those items, but I just wanted to give you some additional background with regard to the project. At present, the project consists of an 87,000 approximately square foot former industrial warehousing and distribution building, of which 40 units of live-work will be situated in the city of Emeryville and approximately 16 will be situated in the city of Oakland. The building has extensive changes along the Adeline or the western frontage, and they will be preserving and renovating the southern facade, which is located along 46th Street. Parking spaces are going to, the applicant is proposing 66 parking spaces, and I'll get into the off-street parking section in just a moment. We've done an evaluation through CEQA and we filed a notice of intent to adopt a negative declaration. There is an issue about an outstanding case closure letter which is still forthcoming from the city of, excuse me, from the county of Alameda. Staff anticipates any potential findings and/or issues will have an accompanying set of provisions to satisfy those, and we have anticipated that and drafted a condition of approval which will require that the applicant fulfill any conditions which have been noted by Alameda County, and that's a practice that we've used before when we've had similar projects. With regard to the architectural design, I'd like to actually direct you to the board. This is the project, and we forgive the small size, but this was what was submitted by the applicant. The top elevation represents the westernmost elevation, which is running onto Adeline Street, and the lower elevation represents the southern elevation, which is running on 46th Street. For those of you that are familiar with the building, you can immediately see the southern elevation is basically maintaining that existing building facade in terms of the stucco, the cornice treatments, and the architectural elements. The one significant factor of that elevation is the reduction of that fairly high tower. That issue did come up at the planning commission at our last meeting, and there was a discussion as to whether it would be appropriate to pursue a use permit to increase the tower height or to maintain it. The commission essentially left that to the applicant. The applicant submitted a plan which you have before you which is showing actually the height being reduced in the neighborhood of 40 feet, so the use permit for potential height is not part of this project. In evaluating this elevation with Plan Director Capio, we basically felt that it was important, at least in essence or in a preliminary fashion, to maintain some of that visual focal point of that tower, the taller tower created. And so, you will find a condition of approval under the design review section, which is asking for a tower element approximately 10 feet in height to extend over the roof line. And that is essentially a compromised position to, again, allow that tower element to not be completely erased, eliminated, to still provide some focal point for that building entry and also to undercut the downside for the applicant with regard to design, cost, and architectural. So, that you will find in your conditions of approval. With regard to the, in all other facts, they will be actually renovating the existing door window frames. There is also a similar condition that along this south elevation, the city really does feel that it's important to put in new frames and windows in terms of aluminum frame in there so that we can actually have a nice match. The problem we found is that many times when you're putting the new windows and door cuts, it's hard to find a match, and so if you've replaced part of them and not the others, you do not have a uniform facade, and we kind of defeat the purpose of the whole renovation effort. So, there's a condition to maintain that level of consistency. With regard to the Adeline Street frontage, the applicant has done some very interesting and pretty creative things, and we find it, you know, it was very fun to review, and I have to commend him for his creativity. He's using a combination of vertical and horizontal metal siding, punch-out windows, in addition to maintaining a certain corner of the stucco. And what that seems to do is to create a complete play along that Adeline Street and a lot of interest. That coupled with that really kind of intricate articulation, as well as the types of material and the spacing of windows, will create a very interesting facade. The colors are also fairly unique. You've got a combination of the mustard yellow, the green, the blue, and then the traditional sand kind of tan and the brown, which is a wraparound from that southern elevation. This elevation is somewhat dated because the Klaus parking system, which we at our last meeting decided to take off Adeline, is actually shown on this elevation. This actually, these windows are now in the new elevations extending down. The Klaus parking system has been incorporated as per the desires of the planning commission in what you'll do, they were formerly located here, that's this elevation. They have been taken and put on the easternmost side in the parking lot area, which I think was the direction of the commission, so I think they addressed that very well. There are approximately 44 parking spaces in the Klaus parking system with 19 onsite or on-grade parking spaces for a total of 66. The total project is 56 spaces, so they actually are meeting the, one of the second requirements the commission had asked for, to make sure that the project parks at least one space per unit, regardless of whether that is in actually Oakland and in Emeryville, and they have satisfied that. So, that's an area that we found that they really did very well in. I would, I'd like to actually go down point by point with regard to the main issues the commission discussed. I've already touched on a few. The zoning and general plan, you'll find in the staff report, the general plan is consistent, and we have no problem with that. And with regard to the zoning, there are a couple of things that I'd like to touch upon. The first has to deal with the live-work requirements, and specifically, one of the areas that's been kind of noted in the staff report has to do with the floor area ratio. Presently, the building, the 87,000 square feet, does not conform to the floor area ratio requirement, and so they're over. However, the commission knows that this has been a longstanding non-conforming structure, and so it's presently non-conforming. We have interpreted the non-conforming provisions to find out that a variance in staff's opinion would not be necessary for the following reasons. Number one, it is a longstanding non-conforming building in terms of the size as well as the use. This is a medium-density residential district, and the former, I believe it was the San Francisco Herb and Natural Tea Company, was also warehousing industrial use. So, both the size of the building and the use were non-conforming. The applicant's proposal would be a major improvement because by the elimination of this interior area, which we approximate is probably about 7,000 square feet, and that's just on grade, so it could probably amount to anywhere between 10,000 to 15,000 square feet if you told about all the floors. By eliminating and demolishing that, the degree of non-conformity is lessened. So, this project actually builds, brings this non-conforming building closer to the actual floor area requirement. The same is true for the use. The former warehousing industrial use was not consistent with the residential zoning. The present live-work use would be consistent with the conditional use permit, which we now have before you, and staff has been able to make all the affirmative findings. So, we in essence find that the current project really lessens the degree of non-conformity, both with regard to the building and the use. For that reason, we have not exercised their option for variance, and we're instead making an interpretation that it's under the non-conforming provisions. If the commission feels differently, then we would certainly follow your direction and pursue a variance, but at this point, we don't feel one is necessary. The second major point has to deal with the use permit for the height of the building, excuse me, the tower element we've already covered. Off-street parking has already been addressed. The applicant's provided 66. We needed a minimum of 56. There are actually 10 over. The real advantage to this, again, to touch upon the off-street parking situation, actually 16 of these spaces, this line right here, represents a dividing line for the 16 live-work spaces that would be in Oakland. The current proposal would not only meet the parking requirements for the 40 Emeryville units, but it would also meet the requirements for the reality of the Oakland units. So, the applicant is actually presenting a plan that will park the entire project even though the city of Oakland is not going to require that. And so, I think that was a very good point, and the staff's supporting that. I think the applicant did a very good job, and we have to commend it. Now, the other thing that I want to qualify that is that he's doing and using a unique system, which is the Klaus parking system. This is a three-tiered system, which does require some undergrounding of below-level parking, and it kind of shells parking and they rotate up. Currently, the Uniform Building Code doesn't really have sections which apply to that. We wrote to the ICBO, and they actually deferred back to staff. And so, at this point, it's very important that we make sure prior to a building permit or occupancy, that we can verify that this system will work in our seismic zone for, for vertical and seismic lows and rotations and those types of things. So, we are making our approval contingent upon getting that type of approval to the satisfaction of our building department prior to any kind of building permits being pulled. And so, with that in mind, you know, our parking would be fine. Design review's already been covered. And then, the last major point that I wanted to make, just to keep the report short, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, has to do with the jurisdiction. We've had a couple of projects, I believe the Gateway was one of them, where we have the joint Oakland and Emeryville projects. In those instances, the practical kind of practice has been that the city that has the majority of the project normally takes the lead with regard to review of building, department plans, and also services by police and fire. With that in mind, since clearly the majority, or at least three-fourths of the units are Emeryville, we have decided, and we are in consultation with the city of Oakland, that the city feels it's appropriate for us to take the lead with regard to the building requirements and providing the emergency services, and that condition of approval has been attached to that effect. So, with these things in mind, we consider it's a very good project. We've covered all of the major issues. We've been addressed, and where they have not actually been nailed down, we have conditions which have been constructed to make sure that those items would be addressed prior to the building permit. With that in mind, staff supports this application and is recommending approval for this condition and design review.
Thank you, Mr. Cromarty. Any questions of staff? Mr. Lutz?
I've got one. And I guess I just want a clarification of the policy of the planning department, and we're changing use here, and I know it's a lesser intense use on far and non-conforming use, but my question becomes, let's say that this use was slightly better versus greatly better. Who makes the determination that the use is so good that we don't need a variance?
Well, it's not the good quality of the use. It's, we're removing one non-conforming aspect of the property right now because warehousing activity is not permitted in a residential zone. So, we've removed that aspect of non-conformity with this application. We're also slightly reducing the degree of non-conformity of the structure in the modifications that are proposed. There still is going to be a non-conforming condition about the structure, which is the FAR exceeds the FAR for a residential district, which is .5. So, we have left it to your interpretation. We support the fact that the non-conforming structure provisions in the ordinance can be used, and we've outlined the structure is not being moved, the square footage or cubic feet within the structure is not being increased. And then, there's a valuation question, which is up to the applicant to demonstrate prior to the issuance of a building permit. If that can be demonstrated, the valuation does not exceed a certain amount over a five-year period, then we believe that they will meet the non-conforming provisions. If you disagree with that interpretation, the only avenue to pursue would be a variance, a variance from the FAR requirement. In looking through the ordinance for variance findings, I would be glad to discuss with you how we could do it. It would mean another additional step for the applicant. So, at this point, we have interpreted and recommended to you that the non-conforming provisions with regard to physical structure meet, or that this application meets that. If you disagree, then the applicant would need to come back for a variance. And I believe that the variance findings, there are arguments that could be made in favor of the variance.
Yeah, and that's sort of my confusion.
So, it's up to you, but we have given you our interpretation and recommendation.
Yeah, and I sort of agree intuitively. My question is twofold. Legally, where do we stand, and also precedent-wise, where do we stand?
You can do the legal one. But that adverb gets, puns it over this way. If the applicant can show that the costs of improvement fall within the requirements for the continuation of a non-conforming structure, I'm comfortable that we're not creating a precedent that's not already allowed in the zoning ordinance. In fact, I would be more comfortable following sort of those specific provisions in the ordinance than creating a variance. I think a variance creates a little bit more ambiguity and perhaps the potential to argue more precedential effects. Then if we have our ordinance that says you can continue a non-conforming structure under these very discreet reasons, and assuming the applicant's able to show that they're meeting all those, and we know, I think, three out of four are there, the fourth on the cost is unknown at this point, and I don't know if the applicant can speak to that later, that I would prefer to take that approach than going to a variance.
Okay, and I don't want to beat this to the ground, but assuming the valuation some time in the future exceeds what's in the ordinance, what happens?
You mean that within the five-year period?
Yes.
The cost of improvement exceeds the value of the property?
Yeah. What do we do?
Well, I guess we could note it in the file, and the applicant could come in for a variance, but I think you're setting a direction now, quite frankly, for the remainder of the new life of the property.
Okay.
And it's a policy interpretation. I believe that this situation is unique in many ways because they straddle city boundaries. There's much different zoning on each side of that boundary. This is a very unique structure within a residential district. I don't believe there is another one like it within the city in terms of, within the RM district. They're in a lot of unique circumstances, and that building has been a local icon. I mean, that is a very well-known building, and I think they've taken fairly good care to maintain the integrity of the structure and the sort of, particularly along that one side, now albeit the tower is, I think, is an issue, but there is a lot of care that's been given to the integrity in the form of that building and maintaining it.
Okay. Any other questions of staff regarding their report? Hearing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation or comments?
I'm John Grove from NPH Architects. I represent a client as well. Your comments are positively received, except for one variation. It's 57 units instead of 56. In moving the Klaus system to the back, we found space for one more unit, and we noted that on the revised drawing, so. That's the only alteration I could make to the application.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, the public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this matter?
Well, I didn't come here absolutely certain I would have anything to say, but I live right up the street from this building, on 46th Street, on the Oakland side. And I'm, I think overall, it sounds like a good idea. I think it would be good for the neighborhood to do something like this with this building. And I came here with some curiosity about some of the terms that were used, and now there's some more curiosity. One thing I'm wondering, does this extend all the way to 53rd Street?
Could you step forward a bit so we can pick you up on the mic?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm wondering if this project extends all the way to 53rd Street and if, and if the existing warehousing and retail outlet that Interstate slash Wonder Bread still maintains, I mean, they were manufacturing Wonder Bread in this building. It hasn't just been a Wonder Bread warehouse, they were manufacturing there 10 years ago. Across the street, Flecto is still manufacturing. So, I'm wondering how all these things interplay, and if it extends all the way to 53rd Street, and whether the whole building, that whole area is going to be come live-work, or if there's still going to be warehousing and retail going on on the site.
Thank you. Barry, do you want to give a?
Yes. To answer your question, and if I'm not answering right, please, but no, I'm doing a good job. No, your first question, I think, of whether it extends to 53rd, that's not going to happen. This is the kind of subject site. This is the corner 46th and Adeline right here. It goes probably midway down 46th Street and apparently midway down Adeline Street, so it will not extend as far. It's going to be basically that corner section of that building.
So, the far end of the property where it goes on to 53rd Street, is going to be continued like it is?
Wonder Bread stays.
Yes.
To the best of our knowledge.
Okay. Right. And with regard to the other uses, we really don't know. I mean, you know, there are other uses, they're case by case. What I can tell you is those other uses, for the most part, are non-conforming uses. In other words, although that area has been designated for residential, there are certain uses which pre-exist, you know, the industrial and the Flecto, and they continue to exist. So, we have certain very strict provisions that if they discontinue use, we can, you know, stop them. But what we want to do ideally in the zoning, just to give you a little bit more of an explanation, is when you have an opportunity, change it to the use that is permitted by the zoning. This actual use of live-work is far better for even neighbors than the previous kind of industrial warehousing, and so that's.
I agree. Sounds like a good idea. I just wanted to make sure. Oh, yeah.
We need you to come to the mic.
Yeah. The other thing I was wondering, I guess, is there any, is this going to be purely market-rate live-work usage, or is there going to also be provisions for low-income people and, or, you know, struggling artists to come in, or is it going to be looking for yuppies to come in?
The answer was market-driven.
Right.
For the record.
Did that answer all your questions?
Yeah.
Okay. I can comment that within the last few years, I recall approval by this planning commission for substantial and expensive improvements by Flecto.
No, I said pictures of them. I said pictures of their improvement.
Well, so you live there then, you recall, but that suggests they're here for a while.
Yeah. A lot of them, yeah.
Would you mind giving your name for the record, sir?
Dan Matson.
Dan Matson.
M-A-T-C-S-O-L.
Thank you for coming. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner comments, discussion?
I've two. Go ahead, Mr. Y. I've two comments. The first one is that I'm delighted to see that the backing out onto Adeline has been deleted from the plan. That was a real sticking point for me. And the second one is that if, for some reason, there is a problem with this hydraulic parking system, I would like to hear about it early enough on that we can maybe step in and help solve it, because I know other jurisdictions in California have approved this parking system, and I think we can get through it. If there turns out to be a problem, I'd just like to hear about it before it stops the project.
Got it. And it's my intention too, I think it's a very creative solution, and it's merely a matter of making sure, the three-tiered system has not been used in that many cases, and we just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's.
See New York.
Oh, and Tokyo too, so I.
Mr. L.
Actually, you say it in Berkeley.
Yeah. The three tiers.
The comment was it's in Berkeley.
In Patrick Kennedy's basement? No. In Patrick Kennedy's basement? No. That's just double.
No. Forty-eight units.
Sir, if you're going to make comments, you need to come to the mic so you can hear. Okay? Chair, or, excuse me, Commissioner Lutz?
Yeah, I have one question about the parking system, and that is the noise issue, and my thinking is, what happens if somebody comes home late, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning and wants to park their car or whatever? What issues are there related to that?
Oh, you mean how noisy is the jack?
Yeah. Yeah, and in other words, like, is this going to be operating 24 hours a day, and what happens when somebody comes in late?
I believe it probably sounds like a winch. There's sort of a hydraulic motor that, oh, it does. Okay, so it's fairly silent. It's electric, isn't it?
Do we have exposure to noise issues here?
Well, there's a standard condition of approval that's been added because this is a live-work. Number K, well, actually, I guess it's J-K-L that got unlabeled, but it's on page two, right under K, about the buyer beware clause, since this is a live-work unit, and you could add the fact that there will be a mechanized parking system which may in fact produce some amount of noise during odd hours.
Was Commissioner Lutz thinking perhaps of the existing adjacent residences to the east?
Oh, I guess I, I'm of the mind, having viewed at least a two-tiered system and listened to it. There is some noise, but I don't think it'll be audible from off-site.
Okay, and so.
We could check that, but I highly doubt it.
I would be, I would be really, particularly since this is a three-tier system, and I don't know anything about these things, and maybe I'm being a little bit overly sensitive to that, but I certainly would like to have some kind of measurement of the noise system once the thing is installed. And if it becomes really an issue, again, I can see this as, you know, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, you know, what the sounds are, that we might want to, you know, there might be some ways of baffling the noise if required. Maybe it's not an issue, but it's something we should take a look at. We can work with the building department and require that the final plans or documents that are submitted to them submit information about noise.
Or we can go see one and actually do.
Maybe the architect could address it. Isn't this a hydraulic system? Which is pretty quiet.
John Grove again. To my knowledge, it's not very noisy. It's a hydraulic.
It's a hydraulic system. I would imagine it's probably no noisier than any hydraulic elevator that you've experienced. And I think there are remedies that we could work with the building department on that. We haven't figured out exactly what type of structure that'll enclose those systems right now. But if it were a type-five building, I'm sure an STC rating of fifty-one or plus would probably handle that. That's what the requirement is for transmission noise from unit to unit. That's the minimum for that. And in something in that range is probably what we're talking about.
Would the applicant be acceptable and would it cover you, Mr. Lutz, to have an item that said something in the effect, in the event that the parking units create a noise concern, noise problem? I, we get complaints that you'll work on radiating the problem.
Yes.
Did I misread the plans? Are they in a structure with a roof?
Yes, they're in a structure. They're not out there by themselves. In fact, depending on costs, I mean, it's got to be, there's going to have to be a pit constructed for the way it operates. If you don't already know, it literally has to have room for the bottom car, if there are three cars in there, to be available at the garage door at the parking level. That means there'd be a stack of two above it. And then the top car has to have availability to be moved out of its tier. So that means there'd be two cars under it. So that's going to be a relatively high volume in there. And the sound effects in the pit itself would be minor because it's going to have to be concrete or concrete block. And any structure above that, if it was type-five, we're probably talking about gypsum plaster on the outside plus it'll be sheaved with plywood for sheer, that's the structural requirement. And then more likely than not, two-by-six studs, probably half-inch resilient channel, which with chipboard on the interior side of that and the half-inch resilient channel deadens the impact somewhat of the wall. That assembly is about an STC fifty-one. And that's pretty, with also sound attenuating bats in between, you know, kind of insulation. That's basically it.
Yeah, and what we'll do is, is once it's built, we'll do a, we can do a decimal meter or something, just to validate it.
Fine with me, we have a handheld one we can get.
So do we want a condition such as that or...
Yeah, I really...
You want a condition accordingly?
Yeah, let's just take, take a picture of that.
Any other questions? Any other concerns? Mr. Koo?
Barry, can you remind me of what we said in December? It was a while ago. I'm reading this about the parking.
We said we loved the place.
I'm sure we did. Well, there are sixteen units in Oakland, forty-one in Emeryville. Oakland requires zero parking. We require sixty-two, they provided sixty-six.
It just changed by one and a half or two.
Well, the numbers I'm reading are the ones that are on the plan. So these are the correct numbers. Which means we are nowhere near one and a half parking spots per unit as a project. And we were all pretty happy with that?
We went around, I recall about a forty-five minute or an hour's discussion about that. And at the end, there was, we started off with a camp that wanted one and a half per unit in Emeryville and Oakland. And a camp that wanted less than is now being offered. And my recollection is that we came to a consensus that if they strictly met the parking requirements for the units within Emeryville by Emeryville standards and therefore met the zoning ordinance for Emeryville. And if they provided in actuality one space per unit and assigned it that way so that there weren't going to be people with no parking cruising around the neighborhood, filling up the sidewalk, the curbs. I believe, I recall a consensus at that time that said, "Go for it." That was, that's sort of how I recall it.
That's, that's correct. When we came in, there was also the issue about whether it was residential or live-work at that time, if you remember. And there was a question about the second, there was a question about the second bedroom. So that was actually the layer in front of that, than the layer that Commissioner Getz just mentioned. And what it basically came down to is the commission basically, as Mr. Getz had indicated, basically, you know, one unit per, one parking space per unit. So if you calculate it a couple of different ways, it would still satisfy you. If you calculate it by one point five for the live-work, that would require sixty spaces and it would satisfy it. If you calculate it the other way by saying, you know, one space per unit, forty spaces, it provides forty onsite spaces through that, would basically satisfy the practical parking of the requirement. And this clearly, I think, the applicant satisfied the direction which you gave him in December.
Why does Oakland require no parking? Is it because they just don't have a provision to work with?
I can't tell you why Oakland does what Oakland does.
Why did I even ask that?
I believe that it's...
I'm sure Mr. Protopapas could give us a long dissertation.
It's a matter of, they believe they want to encourage the reuse of old structures. They also don't require any environmental review, which for a lot of old industrial structures is fairly amazing to me. But different standards, different city. We've tried to marry them and make it work and I believe that the discussion at the end of the December meeting was at least one parking space per unit would suffice.
And assigned that way, which I see in the conditions of approval here.
And given that they've gone through so much effort to meet that, I'm satisfied on the parking.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion?
Sure there were.
Wouldn't be able to decide to do about the tower, that they will work it out with staff?
Well, they've decided, right? Want to go over the...
They've decided to eliminate it and sort of, I decided that they should, there's a little bit more effort that's required because it's an important architectural element. So there's a condition of approval that's been...
Is that something you want us to deal with?
If you want to comment that it's important or not important to you, there were mixed comments at the December meeting. Some of you said it was important. You all recognized the feasibility of retaining the old tower in terms of the expense of it. There's been a small gesture to it. Given what it is now and what it will be, the building will look a lot different. I believe that some more gesture is desirable. And that is what my condition reflects.
You're talking about condition five F on page five, correct?
Yes.
Longest-standing resident of the neighborhood made an impassioned plea at that meeting.
Well, maybe the applicant would like to talk to us about that. Or maybe not.
Well, as you know, it's, we've given you indications before that it's a financial burden on the client to maintain the tower. And we've done even further reconnaissance of the structural system there and we've unearthed the footings to the interior columns and somewhat around the tower. And there's additional, we're going to have to put a perimeter footing around the base of the building, which is an additional cost that we didn't encounter before. This is a totally unreinforced masonry building and all of the steel structure inside depends on this unreinforced masonry force support. Means we have to put steel pilasters up against the masonry on the interior of the building, which, and then would help hold up the foot-and-a-half-thick masonry as it stands now. Right now, in a severe earthquake, that building would totally collapse because there's nothing holding up the perimeter. So this has consequences to the tower. The tower has some steel in it, we believe. So, and the financial consequences have not been totally revised, but I have a hunch that the fee for rehabilitating this would be increased significantly. So I don't think we've changed our position on this in any way. The, we're working with staff and amongst ourselves trying to come up with creative ideas, so that's the latest.
Okay. Is it time to roll through the conditions of approval to see if there's any comments or changes by the planning commission?
Yeah.
Shall we hit page one? Any comments on page one, Mr. Lutz?
I got one on G. And maybe I missed this, but the site shall be well-maintained and shall be kept free of litter, debris, and weeds. I'd like to see graffiti somewhere.
Okay. Do you want the graffiti standard?
Yeah.
We've done it for some projects where you, we do have one, where you have indicated that it's, once it's discovered because of certain security concerns that the police department has about messages, that it be removed within forty-eight or seventy-two hours.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's a separate...
Are we sure that's not the public art?
No comment.
How about all references to fifty-six units being fifty-seven?
So anyway, is that, is that a separate one or is that added on to this? I don't know what we want to do. It might, it might be better if we have that as a standard condition and then...
The graffiti? Is it five working days? What's comfortable for you? At some...
I like five working days.
I think a lot shorter than that and you're creating a very, you're creating a situation in which few property owners will comply and therefore selective enforcement is a problem.
Okay. Commissioner Koo pointed out one C, that two, that should be fifty-seven, is that correct?
How about order H? It says all new onsite electrical service and communication lines. Didn't in the past we said something like all new services or something? It was a little bit more inclusive.
Which one are you on?
H.
H.
No, I think that's...
I think that's the one, it has the word new in it.
Okay.
We've learned.
L gets interesting, okay. Page two, anything...
Under K, there's a fifty-six again.
We'll change that to fifty-seven.
And at Roman numeral two A on the second line, "Final building permit plans shall include all special security measures as required by Emeryville Police Department standards."
Any other comments on page two? Moving to page three. No comments. Page four, no comment. Mr. Koo?
I guess this goes more to just talking about the conditions approvals. Is the, is the city happy with all the improvements they're doing to the neighborhood?
Oh, we reviewed the, if you're talking with regard to street improvements, we reviewed it with Public Works and they were satisfied in terms of the standard, you know, curb gutter sidewalks and then implementation of the standard street trees. And then we looked at that in combination with the landscaping, which is, we didn't really touch on, which will be pretty extensive. We think that that would be a sufficient level.
The Adeline street elevation will be transformed. It's basically one big ugly loading dock with a kind of concrete-walled structure at the... It'll look much different, so...
Was there anything that Public Works wanted that wasn't conceded to?
They, we, actually, I sat down with them, went through them line by line, they got everything. This is their, this is their full complement of requirements.
Correct. Thank you.
Page five?
Oh. I didn't see anything here about aluminum windows, you know, the windows that you wanted on that facade.
Is it that you want aluminum windows or you want uniform windows?
Uniform, I think.
Oh, but it said aluminum in here.
In the staff report.
And that's not reflected in the conditions.
How many windows do you have to change? Like half or three? Do you have to change half the windows on the south facade or three?
Maybe we, we interpreted that to mean that the uniformity of the windows on the, sorry, not the L.A. street side, the Adeline street side would be in basic conformity with the windows on the existing building. But if you've been out to the side, you'll notice there are a lot of windows that are boarded up, literally, blank. And we were going to assess the existing windows. And we were going to put in the boarded-up windows, windows that either matched or came as close to that as possible to maintain the historical flavor of the building.
It's aluminum all day long.
Oh, yeah, it does.
And you're not going to board up all the rest of the windows before maybe...
No, so we're looking for a combination of metal windows on the parts of the building that are brand-new and windows that maintain historical precedent set already. Now, we need to evaluate the windows that are in the historical building that are not boarded up because a lot of them are in poor condition. So they may have to be replaced. But if they're replaced, and if maybe this is something that Barry was alluding to before, you can get vinyl-clad aluminum windows that in a historical section. If that's what you're talking about, that may be a reasonable alternative, but...
Let me explain what our staff concern was. Our concern was that if you have some existing windows that can be refurbished and ones that have to be completely replaced, we didn't want a patchwork of different windows. The problem is that it's difficult sometimes, because the windows are older, out of style or what have you, to actually find new windows that match. And so you really have a facade along the Forty-sixth Street side that is close, but really not uniform. So our concern is, and we understand the applicant's...
I think we're on the same page about this.
Yeah, so the concern is really to have new, uniform windows. Okay, the material is really secondary. We want to make sure that if the facade, if we're going to go to all this trouble, we want to make sure we do it right. So we need to have them new and uniform. The materials, we're more than happy to work out with the applicant.
So how about a condition that says all windows facing Forty-sixth Street shall be of uniform dimension to each other?
And Molyon style or something, or glazing?
Shall be, shall be of uniform dimension detail or something like that. In other words, the section, the section will be the same, whether it's vinyl or wood or plastic or aluminum.
We want the same number of window, I mean, of glazing paint, same dimension, same width. We don't want off-size.
Unless that's the pattern, I mean...
That's what happens when you get different.
No, our intention is to marry two different styles here, if you...
Well, the marrying of the different styles, the Adeline side and then the Forty-sixth Street side.
Let me, let me just clarify that, Barry. The style in building, you'll notice that the Adeline side is an industrial, slightly more avant-garde style. The Forty-sixth Street side is the historical building. And we're trying to marry the two. Now, what we're saying is that the style of windows in the old building will not be changed. We're trying to keep the historical part of that building and that we'll do what we can to preserve the existing windows. And if they can't be preserved, we'll try to find something that either mimics or brings forth that historical flavor. It's an evaluation of the existing windows that operate and if they're in restorable shape, we'll do it.
Can I ask you a quick question right there? Now, what if half the windows are okay and half of them need to be replaced? Are you proposing that you only replace half the windows or something similar as you can find or replace all of them?
That may be a moot point because more than half the windows are boarded up as of speak.
Well, let's say it's not a moot point, what would you...
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is less than half the windows are in good shape now. And what I'm saying, and so the windows that will be put in place of the ones that are boarded up will be of the same flavor and style of the windows that are presently in place. If we can make them as close to what they are as possible, that would be our intent.
Let me ask staff if they want to suggest a condition of approval that they're comfortable with.
Well, again, the reality as a subject of interpretation of what's new and what's old and whatnot has been somewhat of a concern for ours and it would really expedite. Our preference is that you give a condition where we have new, uniform windows along that elevation. It's easier to monitor, it's easier to negotiate and work out with the applicant. We have concrete conditions and then we can implement it. The problem is that when you've got some windows that are, you know, in various stages of repair, some are new, then what combination, how do we negotiate? This one's, this one's worth saving, this one's not. It sometimes becomes unmanageable, so...
Could you tell us a condition that you'd be comfortable with?
I would prefer that the elevator, the window and the door, the door openings, the applicant shall provide new doorways and windows along the Forty-sixth Street elevation, which are uniform. Shall replace all windows and doors on the Forty-sixth Street elevation, which are uniform, new and uniform. That's what we would prefer.
And to go along with that, my thought process is that I've seen, when you see this mix-and-match type of situations, the windows weather at a different rate.
And so, they do become, they may start out as being equally, equal in appearance, but then the weathering comes in and the, new ones are typically a different substrate and the, the weathering just changes and all of a sudden you have different appearance. So, I, I definitely go along with what staff recommends.
Um, I just want to provide a little, just a quick insight into two other projects recently where windows have been a very important part of the project. Fifteen Hundred Park, they tried to save them and what they were doing was mad because of the energy, title twenty-four standards. They ended up replacing all of them. And the same thing's happening on Grove Valve. It's really tough to look at that building and know, there are windows that need to be saved, but if they're saved, they don't meet the same insulation standards. It's, it's fairly difficult to do. And I do have, I share the same concern with Barry in, in terms of them being of uniform dimension and, and, you know, the Molyons being the same quality and depth and the glazing patterns being the same. So, those are the three concerns. That's an important elevation that is evoking of the historic character of the building or the architectural importance of the building.
Or, or-
It's worth, worth a little time.
Yep.
Are we comfortable with Mr. Kamarti's condition of approval?
Yep.
All right.
You live with it?
I think so. Okay? Client says yes. Do you want to report, repeat it?
Um, the applicant shall provide-
He made it very simple.
New, shall provide new-
Door.
Door and window openings, which are new and uniform, which shall be reviewed and approved by staff.
And we're not saying exactly like they are now, but we're saying obviously in keeping with the character that it is.
And I can tell you right now, we'll work with some flexibility instead. Our concern, again, Mr., Mr. Commissioner Lutz hit the nail right on the head. We, if we're going to go to all this effort, we want to do it right. We want to make sure that it's clean and consistent and it's not going to look patchwork because our concern is that it will look patchwork if we don't do it this way.
Yeah. I'm glad you added those last four words on there. Four, five words. Okay. So, we're done with page five?
No, I have one thing.
Yes, Mr. Lutz.
Um, five A.
Five A.
It shall provide adequate illumination for onsite security. I think we had a discussion, Andy, we had a discussion about that in the last one. What is adequate illumination? That's, that's very nebulous and I, can't, can't we get lumens? You have, you have- I promised to get back to you after measuring, I have a list of the places I promised to measure and I didn't do it.
Okay.
But I will do it. I'll try and do it before the next meeting, but I don't promise exactly.
Do you mean the next meeting or the next regular scheduled meeting?
Next regular, I mean, the next, the May meeting.
I'll give him a break here.
Almost certainly do it before the May meeting. I'll get you guys a report on the foot candles in a bunch of different places that we described. So, you get a feel for what that's mean.
Can we put that as a agenda item on the May?
Don't do that. So, anyway, you know, I can, I'll, that's my only point. I would, I would like for us to come up with some kind of-
Standard.
Standard, yeah.
Right. Okay. Page six?
At the bottom of page five, the applicant shall submit revised plans, and this is the business about the tower being ten feet high. It seems like they have submitted revised plans. No? Have I missed something?
These plans do, do not reflect the, the tower, the tower element.
Got it, okay.
This says that the tower is going to be-
How about a new tower element?
Matter of fact, I, I would change the wording a little bit.
Yeah.
You wouldn't mind if it was more than ten feet higher, right?
Right.
And this, this would restrict that to just ten feet. So-
Is the minimum of ten? To at least ten feet or minimum.
That should probably be the proposed tower, right?
Yeah, it should be a new tower or the proposed tower.
So, could the staff read the condition?
Right.
I agree with it. The applicant shall submit revised plans, which provide proposed new tower shall be a minimum of ten feet above the existing roof line. And then the rest of it remain the same.
Good to go. You may make a comment. You won't win, but you may make a comment. Thank you. The client requests that maybe the wording be changed about, something about the fact that saving the tower, but maybe not the existing tower. Under the financial duress that, that may place him ten foot seismic loads on even a ten foot wall in its present shape may be a, a, an issue we may want not to address financially. We took out the word existing? Excuse me? We took out the word existing and changed it. Well, one of the intent would be that, working with staff, it, it may be something other than the existing structure that's in place. Right. I think, I think we're clear on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Okay.
That whole clause seems silly.
What?
The whole clause seems useless.
Okay.
Page six.
Page six. Thank you. Page seven.
Uh, oh, page six. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Page six D near the bottom. I have a problem with any activity.
Oh, you're right.
Sleeping is an activity.
So, um, work activity?
How about intrusive activity because-
Or work activity?
We don't want to put a situation where somebody's working on the computer.
What if I'm, what if I'm-
You're just making them-
Any noise generating activity?
Yes, noise generating. I like that. I thought that had been expected. I expected staff then to comment that smoke and dust generating activity would not be included in noise generating activity. I too would like to go home, but, um-
What are you talking about?
The staff?
I'm sorry.
The staff?
It may be noxious and/or noisy activity.
Bingo.
Noise generating or underlying-
Just intrusive.
Noxious on page seven, number E. Seven E?
Seven E. I thought we addressed at least the noise and the odor. We can add, um-
Well, this is about the hours of operation.
This is the hours of operation.
So, if somebody has a work unit that, if it's between six and ten, they can do it. Otherwise, from ten oh one to five fifty-nine, they have to be quiet.
Look at the list of uses of, at four A. And tell me that those uses are uses that ought not to be allowed at night.
Would you like to drop D? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Would we like to drop D?
I'm fine with dropping D.
D's gone. Page seven?
Um, six A three. Do we want to put a sign on the fence saying this is who you call if this place gets really noisy? Remember that discussion?
I like that one. Yeah.
I mean, it's not too-
That's just in a residential neighborhood and that's what we've done on construction and other residential neighbors. Applicants shall provide a twenty-four hour contact telephone number during the per, term of construction.
In a highly visible place?
Or at, at all times when any construction activity is occurring. Doesn't have to be twenty-four hours because you're not that way.
But what that's for is if you're operating outside the hours of seven AM to six PM, we want a phone number so somebody can call and say knock it off.
When the Bobcat guy fires up at four AM.
Right. And that, that's typically been the issue. It's not been the actual construction. It's been the people arriving early and idling their trucks.
Right. The gentleman left, but they get there an hour early and they're idling and all that.
So, and that, that really has to be-
And it was the phone number of the construction manager or-
I thought it was Andy's phone number.
And the police.
Oh, Andy Getz, wasn't it?
No, it's going to be John's phone number, right.
Okay.
Responsible party.
Okay.
And, and just, just again, we, we do take that one relatively seriously.
Definitely.
No, I think that's-
It's a good neighbor.
Members of this commission have been known to drive by and call the number just to see if it works.
Even though the neighbors that would be complaining live in Oakland.
Well, not all the neighbors.
More than likely.
Page eight. Are there any other?
Yeah. Page eight, five, A, little A, the last word. How about dust?
To control water, all active construction areas.
That's what it controls.
Right.
Oh, to control dust effects?
Well, it's talking about dust control. You're right.
Dust is what water controls.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay.
Two pages, sorry.
Now, having gone through that, I'm going to guess that somebody might want to make a motion on ND ninety-nine dash three.
Move approval.
Second it.
Could you call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Ku?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Commissioner Getz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
And Chair Mooney.
Aye. I'm sorry, that was Owens and Ku?
And Ku.
Owens and Ku.
Ku. Since our staff members in here, I don't want to get yelled at in a couple weeks.
Right.
Signing these things. I didn't keep good. Okay. How about resolution CPC, I'm sorry, ninety-eight dash eighteen and DR ninety-eight twenty? Move approval.
Second.
I heard Lutz and, that's the resolution.
Owens, did she win?
I said it a little bit louder than Ku did.
Lutz and Owens.
What is that resolution?
I thought it was just Lisa.
That's the UP, I'm sorry, UP.
That's the use permit one.
Use permit and design review.
What did we just vote on?
CPC, the negative deck. You have to do the negative deck first.
Got it, sorry.
Sorry, I keep, uh, and I'm doing that right, aren't I?
You are.
See? You might think I know what I'm doing.
So, um-
It'll just take seconds.
Same mover and second.
Moved and seconded, uh-
Lutz, Owens.
Same names.
Go.
Commissioner Ku?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Commissioner Getz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
And Chair Mooney?
Aye.
The unanimous vote.
Now you're safe.
Thank you. I move, we reopen that item? Okay. Sixty-three forty Christie Avenue.
Next week, please.
But I, I think I, on advice of council, am I supposed to open the public hearing?
We didn't have that scheduled.
And continue it, right.
In case someone wants to-
So, I'd like to ask the staff not to report right now. I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone want to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll continue this to April twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-nine. Hearing closed. Fifty-eight ninety-five Christie.
Hearing continued.
Continued, thank you. Fifty-eight ninety-five Christie Avenue. Would staff delay their report, please? I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on the signing?
I do.
Yes?
Oh, I can't, I'm sorry.
Seeing none, I'll move this to the four twenty-nine agenda as well and I'll continue the hearing and close it. That moves us down to eighteen hundred Powell Street. I didn't have a report. I presume there isn't one?
There isn't one, but if you could open the public hearing, continue that one too, that would be great.
I don't know. Do we want to do that? Is there, staff doesn't want to report on that? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on eighteen hundred Powell Street, Holiday Inn? Seeing none, we'll continue it to April twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-nine. That moves us down to five. Commissioner comments? Other commissioners that wish to-
Does that one continue to April or May?
April, if you will.
April twenty-ninth. They're all, all three were continued to April twenty-ninth. So, between that and the Bay, excuse me, the South Bay front, we're going to have a lot to do.
The South Bay front's going to be on next Thursday night?
No.
Oh, isn't that why we're meeting next week?
Yes, but not anymore. I mean, the South Bay front is still in process with developing and completing application.
So, do we think-
And we've run into some complications.
Do we think that might be ready for the regular May meeting?
That's what we're shooting for. We're expecting plans next week and so by the twenty-ninth, I'll let you know because we, we will know where we are.
Complications?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But not with the design.
Okay.
No, not, not, not trying to rule with an iron fist, but don't call me up and ask for a special meeting. Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I have one.
Mr. Lutz.
Actually, first of all, are we doing, I know I talked with a city council member about Pac Bell and trying to get some service, a little better service.
That came up at the council meeting on Tuesday. And what we decided to do, I believe, and I'll check with Susan on this for you specifically, is there were also questions about cable and concerns. So, they decided to have a telecommunications workshop meeting with Pac Bell, the cable provider, and duke it out.
Excellent.
And I will, I think it's the first meeting in June, but I'll check with Susan about it.
I have a request.
Uh, Mr. Lutz still has the floor?
I'm sorry.